All right, that brings us to announcements. We've got roughly six announcements tonight. Our first one is our Arbor Month presentation, proclamation and youth recognition. Emma, welcome.
Thank you, everybody. This is on, right?
Yep.
Okay, great. My name is Emma Gray. I currently serve as the Chair of the Tuolton Parks Advisory Committee, which you already know, but will learn later, serves as the Tree Board for the City of Tuolton. So I'm honored to present this year's Arbor Month presentation. First, we'd like to talk about the purpose of Arbor Month. The purpose of Arbor Month is multifaceted. You'll see from the slide that trees, especially urban forestry trees, have public health and social benefits like clean air, noise reduction. Studies show it can reduce crime and calm. We also have environmental benefits, including attenuating climate change effects, conserving energy, helping with water filtration and storm water mitigation. It creates wildlife habitat for native birds and animals. There's economic benefits to our city, including increased home values and bringing businesses to Tuolton. And last but never least, trees are really aesthetically pleasing and they make Tuolton a really beautiful place to live by having quality of life improved and a nice sense of place for us in our city. In the City of Tuolton, we love trees. So here is a slide with just a few of the wonderful activities that we've taken. We have a Tuolton Trees Photography Contest, which I am very honored to announce the winners of in this presentation, as well as a Kids Poster Contest. We have an Arbor Month proclamation coming very soon. There were improvements to the Old Salmon River Trail. There was a Tuolton Historical Society Poetry Contest, a number of Putting Down Roots Volunteer Tree Plantings, where we increased our canopy here in the city, which is great, Hug a Tree Events for Earth Day that will be coming up in April. There's going to be Tuolton Library Tree-Themed Storytimes, Smokey the Bear Reading Challenge, and an Arbor Month Scavenger Hunt in the park. So all of those things are coming up in the month of April to celebrate Arbor Day, and I hope that everybody takes advantage of some of those. Now we get to the really fun stuff. We have a Kids Poster Contest here in the City of Tuolton, and we get lots and lots of submissions, so it's very hard to choose the winners. But we're really pleased to present today a winner in three age categories. So you can see there, Isla H. is our Grade K through 2 winner for Homes for Animals. Tuolton Trees are homes for animals. Tenley R. gave us Tuolton Trees Are Magic for our Grades 3 through 5 winner. And then Petra S. says Tuolton Trees are reminding us of our roots and is our Grades 6 through 8 winner. The Adult Trees Photo Contest winners are here. Nature's Mirror, which the location is the Tuolton River, I bet a lot of people recognize that, winner is Matt Hanson. And then our second and third place winners, Autumn Canopy by Julie McGuire, taken at Jergens Park, and Sunrise Tree, our third place winner, taken by Valerie Holt on Martin Ozzy Avenue. Tuolton, as many of you already know, is a Tree City USA. The Tree City Certification is awarded by the National Arbor Day Foundation to recognize communities that have proven their commitment to an effective, ongoing community forestry program. Tree City USA standards include, but are not limited to, having a tree board, which I mentioned is a T-Park in our city, a tree care ordinance, a community forestry program with a budget, and Arbor Month observance and proclamation. And all of that leads to me very proudly proclaiming that the City of Tuolton is recognized this year as a Tree City for the 37th consecutive year. And with that, I will thank you all for the time and let you get to the good stuff, which is the proclamation. Thank you so much, and happy Arbor Month.
Yeah. Oh, the fun stuff is prizes. Come on, Emma.
Yes, the fun stuff is prizes. I should get out of the way.
So Isla is not here tonight, but I want to congratulate her on her piece of art. But Tenley, are you here? Come on up. You don't have to be so pushy. So part of winning the poster contest is you get your piece of art framed. And then you get a great gift back, too. Congratulations. And then for our Grades 6 to 8 winner is Petra. This is fantastic. I mean, this is super nice. How long did it take you to draw this?
Um, like, a little bit of color.
That's it? Wow. Congratulations. Here's your gift bag.
Thank you.
All right. So I want to thank all the participants in the art contest. As Emma said, they get a lot of submissions, and we only can name a few winners. But, you know, next year, you can try again and submit your art. The city, like Emma said, we value our trees. The Putting Down Roots Event is coming up in April. I've already signed up. We're going to plant another tree. I think it's over in Othlady this year, I think, where we'll have the Friends of Trees, a couple hundred volunteers, do a whole bunch of plantings. So with that, I'll do the proclamation for Arbor Month. A proclamation declaring the month of April 2024 as Arbor Month in the City of Tuolton. Whereas Arbor Day is a celebration observed throughout the nation and the world in which individuals and groups are encouraged to plant, care for, and celebrate the many values of trees, and Arbor Month is observed in the State of Oregon during the entire month of April 2024. And whereas healthy trees reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, moderate the temperature, calm traffic, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and are a renewable resource, given us paper and countless other wood products. And whereas trees beautify our community, increase property values, and enhance the economic vitality of businesses areas in Tuolton, and thousands of trees and shrubs are planted by volunteers in Tuolton's park lands every year. Whereas 2024 marks the 37th consecutive year the City of Tuolton has been certified as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the following best practices in community forestry management. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that the City of Tuolton designates the month of April 2024 as Arbor Month in the City of Tuolton. All are urged to support efforts to protect and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. The City of Tuolton supports the Oregon Department of Forestry and the National Arbor Day Foundation in their recognition of the value of trees and forests by proclaiming April 2024 as Arbor Month in Tuolton, introduced and adopted this 25th day of March 2024. That brings us to item number two, Parkinson's Awareness Month proclamation, which will be read by Council President Pratt.
Proclamation declaring April 2024 as Parkinson's Awareness Month in the City of Tuolton. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. And whereas Parkinson's disease is estimated to affect approximately 1 million people in the United States, and the prevalence will more than double by 2040. And whereas Parkinson's disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas it is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's disease is at least $52 billion annually, including indirect costs in patients and family members of $29 billion. And whereas research suggests that the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. And whereas there's no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's disease, and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the equality of life for persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. And whereas increased research, education, and community support services, such as those provided by the Parkinson's Foundation and other organizations, are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that April 2024 is Parkinson's Awareness Month in the City of Tuolton.
Thank you. That brings us up to our next proclamation, read by Councilor Brooks.
All right. This proclamation is declaring April 2024 as Community Development Month in the City of Tuolton. And there's information about community development in the library right now, so take an opportunity to look at the showcases in the library. Whereas the month of April 2024 has been designated as National Community Development Month by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, and the Home Investment Partnerships Home Program. And whereas the CDBG Program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas the Home Investment Partnerships or Home Program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. Nationally, over 1 million units of affordable housing have been completed using home funds. And whereas, over the program's history, our community has received a total of $1,031,368 in community development block grant funds. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that the month of April 2024 is National Community Development Month in support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. The council urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program by supporting increased funding for both programs in fiscal year 2024, introduced and adopted this 25th day of March 2024.
Thank you. And our final proclamation for tonight will be read by Councilor Sacco.
Proclamation declaring April 7 through 13, 2024, as National Library Week in the City of Tuolton. Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passions, no matter where they are on life's journey. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the populations they serve. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs, and technology in addition to books. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals, creating thriving communities for a better tomorrow. And whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the right to education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas Tuolton residents have a long history of strong support for public libraries, library workers, and library volunteers. And whereas library supporters and advocates across the nation are joining together to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that the week of April 7 through 13, 2024, is National Library Week. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit their library and celebrate the adventures and opportunities libraries unlock for us every day, introduced and adopted this 25th day of March 2024.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to item number five, a new employee introduction. Terrence, you're up. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening, Council.
Yeah, I'm here this evening to introduce our newest member to the Water Division. This is Utility Tech 2 Abdurazak Abdurazak. His first day here was December 26, and Abdurazak comes from the City of Portland, where he had five years of experience, four of them with the Water Division's Construction and Maintenance Crew, and he's already gotten his feet wet, literally, a couple times on some service line breaks. And, you know, with Tuolton, obviously, we're a smaller city, so, you know, he gets involved with everything from, like, water quality to customer service stuff. So he's been, it's been a great fit, and yeah, glad to have him, so.
Glad to be here.
Yes. Yeah.
So you started in December?
Yeah, right after, I think, December 26.
All right.
Yeah.
You're enjoying it so far?
Ah, so far, I'm learning all sorts of things. When I was in Portland, just did most of the maintenance construction portion of it, but here it's kind of like being a jack-of-all-trades and learning water quality, customer service, and all that, so it's nice.
All right, great. Well, welcome, and I very much appreciate you joining the team here.
Of course.
You know, as you know, we're a Portland Water customer. We're going to be getting to that contract soon, so you're probably still chatting with some of your ex, you know, friends over at the Portland Water Bureau, but thank you very much for joining our team. Very much appreciate what you do. Terrence is a terrific, he knows everything about water. There is no about water, so very much appreciate you coming here and helping us out.
Of course. Thank you guys for having me.
All right. Have a good evening.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Please limit your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in Zoom who would like to address the council, I'll go with the folks on Zoom first, and then the folks are here in person. So is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
No? Okay. I have one person signed up, the Tuolton Pride Stride. Valerie, welcome.
Thank you.
What'd you do to your foot?
Kangaroo boxing. Just kidding, that didn't happen. Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and esteemed staff. My name is Valerie Holt, and I am one of the co-chairs for this year's Tuolton Pride Stride Committee. I'm here today to personally invite each of you to this year's Pride Stride event. I'd also like to invite the millions watching at home as well to join us. Last year, we started with just the Pride Stride. This year, we're expanding the event to include vendors, we have food, we have music. It's going to be a much bigger celebration. So following the Unity Walk, we're hoping to have a really good reception area, so it would be really amazing to have all of you participate. I heard the mayor is going to have a phenomenal speech. We're all super excited for it. No pressure, Mayor.
Brief, nice and brief, though.
Yeah. The festivities kick off at 10:00 a.m. June 22 in the Tuolton Commons. The Pride Stride itself will kick off at 10:30, and then we'll have the reception area immediately following that back at the Tuolton Commons. And I do have some sheets to pass out to all of you for those interested. And also, we are still looking for vendors, volunteers, donations. TuoltonTogether.org is hosting the website, so if you guys want to go to there, anybody online donations would be much appreciated. But yeah, we're really looking forward to seeing everybody. Last year's event was a phenomenal success. No issues. Thank you, sir. And we're looking to repeat that, so thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. All right. Anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Got my calendar, about to take it. So no one else for public comment? All right. That will then bring us to the next item on the agenda, which is our Consent Agenda. These items are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the Consent Agenda consists of item number one, consideration for approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of February 26, 2024. Item number two, consideration for approval of a new liquor license application for sushi toro. Item number three, consideration of approval of late liquor license renewals for 2024. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5761-24, authorizing modifications to the employment agreement with the city manager. And finally, item number five, consideration of resolution 5762-24, accepting grant funds from the Department of Land Conservation and Development and appropriating special purpose revenues in the city's road operating fund. Would any council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight?
I move to adopt the Consent Agenda as read. Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt the Consent Agenda as read. Any discussion on those motions? All of the favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to Special Reports. Our first special report is the Outside Agency Grant Award Eve, Community Action Organization. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, councilmembers.
Okay, so we are from Community Action, and our program is the Emergency Rent Assistance Program for Eviction Prevention. Maybe I don't know how to use this.
There you go.
There you go. Okay. So this is the information on how to apply for services. We open.
Read your name.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Wendy Polanco. Wendy Polanco, Emergency Rent Program Manager. See, I was figuring it would be like three, maybe four people, so now I'm like all over the place.
My name is Soila Copiano Shee Eya, and I am the Housing Stability Director at Community Action overseas.
Well, welcome.
Right. Thank you. So this is the information on how to apply for services. We open our phone lines on the 15th of the month at 9:00 a.m., and that is where we take the majority of the applications. We are also at eviction court in Washington County Hillsborough, Washington County Courthouse. Every Monday, there's an eviction court. The eviction court runs from 50 to 150 people there that have been summoned for eviction, and we have a couple of housing navigators there taking applications for rent assistance for any landlords that are willing to work with their tenants as well. There's more information there on that link for our program. And our eligibility criteria right now is that someone needs to have a non-payment eviction notice, that they live in Washington County, of course, has not received assistance with us in the past 12 months, and is under the 50% area median income bracket. Even though we do take applications for people that have a 10-day eviction notice, we are prioritizing anyone that has gone through court or is, you know, at higher risk of housing instability. Our application flow chart, you know, we have a few access points. Like I mentioned, we have a couple of housing navigators at eviction court. Every Monday, we open up our prevention phone lines on the 15th of the month. We have seven cultural-specific partner organizations that are also taking applications at their sites for us. And then we have a person at the Family Justice Center out in Beaverton that's also taking applications. So we go and do the whole assessment, collect the information from both the tenant and the landlord. And then the approval part is just the longest part because we have to make sure that all dots and commas and everything is there before it goes in for payment. At the moment, this is the timeline for non-payment eviction notices. We know that rent is due on the 1st of the month. It is considered late on the 5th of the month, and that's when landlords can include a late fee. If it's not received by the 8th of the month, normally that is when the landlord is able to give a 10-day eviction notice. The 10-day eviction notice expires somewhere around the 18, so landlords are not able to file for eviction until the 19 of the month. And then on the 19 of the month, when they file for eviction, they send the summons for court for everyone that hasn't paid rent yet. Normally, that doesn't happen until April 4, about a couple of weeks after, is when we meet them there at first appearance. At first appearance, they're given three options. They're giving, they can either choose a move-out date, they can sign a stipulated agreement, or they can go for trial. Anyone that does decide to go for trial, it pushes them out 15 to 30 days out. Right now, we are seeing them being pushed out about six weeks ahead just because of the number of evictions that are out there. The good thing is, thanks to House Bill 2001, we are still able to make a payment up to the date before the trial date, so it does give us a little bit of time to process their So far, this is the eviction breakdown, and I cannot see that far, but out of the 6,843 total evictions that have been filed, and these numbers were collected from July 2022 till now, about 45% of them have signed stipulated agreements. 1% has a pending first appearance. 27, almost 28% have had evictions, and then 17%, I think that's a 17, no, 25% have been dismissed either because a landlord, because a tenant paid or because we paid. And then this is the assistance in the past three years, and the first one that you see is the number of households that we have served. The green parts are everywhere in Washington County, and all of the blue is just specifically to Tuolton residents. And the total funds that we have used is in the middle, and the number of average payment per household is the last one, and you can see how Tigerd and Tuolton rents are the highest in Washington County right now from what we're seeing. This is our team. And then I have flyers with me if anyone is interested, but those are our flyers. We do have staff in our team that speak English, Spanish, and Arabic, and then if there's any other languages that are required, we do have a contract with password to languages to have them interpret for us.
I don't know if we have time for questions.
Okay, yeah, no rush. Council President Pratt.
Oh, I wondered, when you work with the landlords, how often, like, what reaction do you get? How often is it successful, like?
It is much more successful now that we have time and that we're able to make a payment prior to trial date. It's very successful. It's very rare that we have anyone not want to participate with us. Maybe one out of 1,000 applications, very rare.
Usually landlords want to get their payment.
Yeah.
Yeah. They don't want to evict people.
No, yeah. We also have landlords that call us directly for their tenants and ask for information on how to apply. They put our information under eviction notices as well, so so far, so good.
That's awesome.
Other questions? Council Brooks.
I didn't quite hear when you said that Tuolton, Tiger Tuolton is the highest?
Yeah, so from what we're seeing, we divided the average payment per household and some of the highest, with the highest rents are kind of in the Tiger Tuolton area.
Okay, so you meant highest rents, not rates?
Yeah, highest rent amounts.
Thank you.
Councilor Ritz.
You don't put us Tiger Tuolton together, right? You are able to.
No, no. I'm just, they need the top two.
Because they have 58,000 people. Yeah, we're only about 28,000 people compared to them. So I'm just looking at the areas of assistance and how much is spent for Tuolton. It looks like you, so far, you've had, served 73 people on your first, if you go back to your slide. And then it has the total amounts of funds, so is that $412,000 from July? And then it has the total amounts of funds, so is that $412,000 from July, July 1st to December 2020, so I guess your two quarters on that one right there?
Yeah.
You spent $412,000 helping people here in 12-ten from July 1st to December 31st, 2023?
Where are you looking at the 412?
The middle, the middle.
The one in the middle?
Yeah. That one right there.
Right, so that's $412,506, yeah.
That's six months.
For 12-ten, and just for the six months, for our program year runs from July to, July 1st to June 30th. So I was only able to collect the first half for this year.
Holy cow, all right. I just, I was just curious. I wanted to make sure I got the number right.
Yeah.
And then your average amount per household, 5,600, that's average of a payment for someone that's.
That's average of payment when, because when we, someone comes in for assistance, we pay all arrears, everything that is needed to prevent the eviction. So it could be a couple of months of rent. It also includes late fees, any utilities that are paid directly to the landlord, any other fees like pet fee or garage fee. And then a lot of the times, because we collect a lot of applications from eviction court, the landlords will include any filing fees and attorney fees on those ledgers.
Wow, and when you pay someone's, to get back on track, it will be, you said from the beginning, they start, I guess, being that late, like late payment from the first missed rent until.
Yeah, so as long as funding allows, we try to cover everything that is needed to prevent the eviction at the moment.
Okay, and how long is that from the moment someone says, okay, I'm being evicted, until the day that they are actually, that you help them pay? Would that be two months, one month, three months?
Just up to that month. So anyone that applies in March, we cover everything up to March.
Okay.
So we don't, we're not doing any future payments as really between the landlord and the tenant. We're just covering the amount needed to cure the complaint from the landlord.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
When I, you know, the 12-ten numbers look really small, but if I take it like pro-rata by population, it's higher than the actual allocation would be, but that matches with the high rent. It's like you're getting, you're being very equitable about dispersing the funds to us.
Yeah.
Other questions? Did, how many folks, how many cases are there, you're saying, every Monday?
Every Monday at eviction court, it can be anywhere between 50 to 150. 150 is the cap of how many cases they take.
And these are new cases every?
Every Monday.
Wow, okay. And then, so after you make the landlord whole, what's your, what's the success if you, so there, the landlords made whole, do most of the folks who get that assistance then get back on their feet and can start paying their rent again?
As far as we've seen, we've been doing six-month follow-ups where we check in with the landlords and the tenants vote to see where they're at, to see if they're still in their rental unit or if they move elsewhere, but if they're still housed. So so far, do you remember the percentage? I don't remember the percentage, but it's high. Yeah, it's, it's, it's been.
For those who actually answered the six-month follow-up, so we try either the tenant or we try also with the landlord, because we want to prove that this intervention supports people staying in house, in housing, and not go to homelessness, which, you know, we also have support on that side of the system, but we want to keep people housed. And we, in order to prove and advocate for prevention funding to the state and to the cities, and we are doing the six-month follow-up, and it's very successful.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Council Brooks.
I just also wanted to thank you for including the 12-ten numbers in the, sometimes we don't get that, so it's really helpful to be able to understand. And I also, just sitting on the pad, I also just want to say that it's such an efficient way to cure some of our homelessness problems and spend our dollars, because to keep people in houses costs a lot less than a lot of other interventions. So I just want to thank you for the good work and for coming out, telling us more about it today.
Thank you.
Anything else? Very much appreciate you coming out tonight, presenting. You guys are doing terrific work, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so that brings us to item number two in special reports, the 12-ten Library Advisory Committee Annual Report. Welcome, Dana.
Wonderful to see you.
Good evening.
And Jeriann.
Hi, hi, Mayor and council members. I'm Jeriann Thompson, the library director, and it is my pleasure to introduce to you Dana Polino, who many of you know, and Ashley Payne, the chair and vice chair for the 12-ten Library Advisory Committee to give their annual report tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. It was wonderful to see you all again. Seems like it was just very short time since I was here last. Goodness. Here's an update from our committee members for the current year. We have a great committee. We provide a lot of input. We represent the diverse, the diverse community we have here in 12-ten. And I do want to note that last year, we did have Alan Feinstein, who ended his term Last year, the library committee engaged in discussions regarding several library services, including the library's marketing plan, the Makerspace, and programs. As you can see in the photo, we're back to blockbuster crowds for many of the big programs. We discussed an update to and approved the collection development policy, which outlines how the library manages the collection of books and other materials. Additionally, in the last year, the committee recommended approval of revisions to the gifts and use of library by tutors policy. Other topics considered by the committee included intellectual freedom, the annual user survey, facility improvements, and operating hours for Christmas Eve. We also reviewed Chapter 20 of the Oregon Municipal Handbook about libraries. The committee regularly reviews and discusses library utilization trends. TLAC is proud to support the library's programs and services. Committee members discussed and made recommendations to support programs and services that align with several of the city council's vision statements. TLAC annually reviews the library's proposed actions to achieve the strategic plan, and I want to take a moment to share with you some of the accomplishments within last year. The library developed and implemented a marketing plan to promote the value of library programs and services. Implementation included significant staff training, new branding, new e, excuse me, new e-newsletters, and increased social media promotions. The graphic is actually an example of one of our recent newsletters, or sorry, campaigns. The library had a grant-funded, paid summer teen intern. Library management focused on improving services through staff training, including the topics of customer service and providing reading recommendations. The library expanded the student library card program for 12-ten students in partnership with the Tiger 12-ten School District. And staff increased programming in support of social connection and within the Makerspace. And in 2023, community survey, 91% of residents rated 12-ten Public Library as excellent, good, and participants of the library recent annual user survey rated customer service at 12-ten 4.6 out of 5 stars. In 2023, TLAC recommended city council adopt a proclamation recognizing banned books week, a celebration of our freedom to read. We appreciate council's support for that. Each month, we hear a report from the teen library committee, which meets regularly to assist with developing exciting and interesting programs for youth. TLAC also receives presentations from library partners and recommended activities to strengthen these partnerships. Presentations included the Parks and Recreation Department, 12-ten Library Foundation, and Friends of 12-ten Library. The other role of TLAC is to hear and consider complaints regarding library policies or materials. There were no specific complaints brought before TLAC this year, and TLAC holds open meetings, and members of the community are welcome and invited to attend. In addition, the committee regularly reviews and provides feedback on comment cards submitted by patrons. Throughout the presentation, we've shared a handful of pictures and of the most popular programs. And on this slide, you'll see not only the annual teen program, Unlucky in Love, but also the New Year's Eve celebration. This slide shows our goals for the coming year. In particular, we want to mention that the library will be updating its strategic plan next fiscal year, and we look forward to being involved in that effort. We're also interested to learn what role we can play regarding community engagement for the WCCLS Funding and Governance Evaluation Project, which is just kicking off. Jeriann shared with us the briefing memo she prepared for you regarding WCCLS's funding and governance history and the goals for the project. This will be an important project, and we want to ensure 12-ten's voices are heard in the process. TLAC appreciates the council's ongoing support for our public library, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Council Brooks.
Well, I just want to say congratulations on the great work. It's great ratings, and I appreciate the opportunity to support you guys as however we can. I know everyone loves the library, and I'm curious just if there was like anything, like the little teeny bit that wasn't perfect, if there's any like needs that the community is talking about that is coming up more often.
We recently did our annual user survey, and we asked a lot of programs seeking feedback about, or excuse me, asked a lot of questions seeking for feedback about programs, different types of programs, days and times that it's convenient for family members depending on the age of children in the household. So right now, we're really digging into that data to see, within the capacity that we have, you know, are there tweaks that we can make? Are there shifts that we can make to be able to offer, say, more storytimes on the weekends? Or, you know, how can we best meet that balance? So that's probably the biggest area where we're trying to look and make tweaks right now.
Great. And I had one more. It's okay, I'll think of it. Thanks.
Council President Pratt.
We can all be reached at council@12-ten.gov, and as this WCCL process goes forward, if, I would appreciate if you could send us some reminders that we could advocate for you and our library. That does such great work.
Other questions, comments? Okay.
I was just curious how the new program for the National Parks is.
Oh, for the Ice Age Trail? It's, it's really popular. As a matter of fact, a week or so ago, we had a couple come in who said they were from Australia, and they were visiting the U.S., and I think they had learned about the Ice Age Trail from their daughter, and so they were really excited to be able to come to the library and get the booklet and get a stamp for their passport. And we, we get those kinds of stories all the time for people who are visiting the area as well as community members who learn about it. You know, they walk on the trail behind the library, and then they come in, and they're so excited to have those opportunities to see that history in our local community. So it's been a great partnership.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, other questions? The guy asked about the Makerspace, how is it still a people jazz?
It's going great. It's going so good. I mean, Kit came and gave a presentation to TLAC in December. It's been open for two years now, and it's still going strong. And one of the great things that I think we're really proud of is that we've been working with different community groups to increase access to the equipment in the space. So we regularly have Girl Scout troops and Boy Scout troops who come in, but we also have a couple of groups that support adults with developmental and other disabilities, and they bring the adults in to the Makerspace to work on projects together as well. So we're really reaching lots of different types of individuals and community members through that space, and it's, it's such a great treat to be able to offer that to our community.
Any new weird checkout items that they need to take?
We just got a new 3D printer, so I think we now have three or four 3D printers in the Makerspace, and that's one of the most popular items for sure. But art supplies is also hugely popular. I mean, just people coming in and playing with paint and clay and, and things like that. So we, we haven't added as many, we, we've added a couple of new things to the library of things, but we've probably been putting more of a focus on the board game collection because that's been really popular, so.
All right, all right. Any other questions? Well, thank you all for coming tonight. You guys are doing outstanding work. Again, you know, the library and parks are what we're known for here in 12-ten, rather than traffic. We'll focus on the positive things, but you guys are doing terrific. As a former TLAC person, I very much appreciate your efforts in helping out Jeriann and her crew in advising on the operations of the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, that brings us to general business. Our first item of general business is consideration of resolution number 5760-24, authorizing the city manager to execute a water sales agreement with the city of Portland. Rachel, this is taking forever. But it's a positive thing. It took a while.
We're two years ahead of schedule, so. But yes, it's taken a very long time.
Didn't it start off there under Jeff? Yeah.
Yes. This is transcended staff members, went through a pandemic, but here we are. I'm very happy to be here tonight, so. Hi, everybody, I'm Rachel Sykes, Public Works Director here at the city of 12-ten. I'm here tonight to give you an update on our contract negotiations for a wholesale water contract with the city of Portland, with an ultimate ask for your approval and authorization for our city manager to sign and execute the agreement. All right. So as you may recall, I visited you all in early October to provide you with an overview of the city's water purchase history, the timeline of the negotiation process, some key outcomes we were looking to achieve in our negotiations, and some notable contract components. Tonight, I will provide a condensed refresher, I hope, of that information and share some updates on what's transpired in the negotiation process since October. And then I will present some key outcomes or themes that I feel we have successfully achieved throughout our negotiation work. I'll round out the presentation with discussing some general financial impacts associated with the contract and what our proposed next steps are, should the council approve the contract tonight. And I will take feedback and questions at the end if you have them. Okay, there we go. So to jog your memory, 12-ten has purchased water as a wholesale customer from the city of Portland since 1979. Portland currently provides water to 19 wholesale customers, ranging from really small providers with just a few connections to very large providers with many thousand connections. All of our water comes from the Bull Run Watershed, which is supplemented by wellfields in the Columbia South Shore area there, off the Columbia River in the summertime to supplement high demands. Treated water flows from Bull Run to the city of 12-ten through a series of transmission lines around 60 miles to the city boundary. The cost to purchase water from Portland currently sits about $3.3 million per year, $1.54 per unit of water, which is 748 gallons. So a quick timeline refresh for you. Our current water wholesale contract was executed in 2006. It was developed as a 20-year contract. Under the terms of the contract, a notification of intent to not renew is due five years before contract expiration, which in this case was 2021. Several wholesale customers were working on the development of their own new water sources well before the 2021 deadline. So 12-ten Valley Water District, Gresham, and Rockwood PUD all ultimately gave notice to Portland of their intentions of non-renewal well before that 2021 deadline, around 2014 to 2016, because, as we all know, developing a new water source takes a number of years. So with this knowledge, 12-ten was left with a choice. Do we continue to purchase water from Portland? Do we seek an alternate source? What do we want ultimately to do in our future? So after consideration, the 12-ten City Council determined it was in 12-ten's best interest to continue to purchase water from the city of Portland. They gave direction for staff to move forward with negotiation and execution of a new contract. So the term of the new contract that we're working on negotiating is 30 years. It's set to expire in June of 2026, and the goal was to have a new contract developed and ready for execution before that time. So as I said, I'm happy to report, we are two years ahead of schedule. I don't know who said government works slow, but we are the exception here. Transition to a new contract won't occur until 2026, so if you ultimately decide to approve tonight, we will not transition to this new contract for two years. For a financial perspective, this is the right move, staying with the current. For a financial perspective, this is the right move, staying with the current contract until that 2026 execution gives us the most favorable costs, so. And as mentioned, three large wholesalers have opted to exit the contract at its expiration. Because of this reuse, renewal, recycling of the existing contract as written was also not favorable for Tuolotin. It would have led to exponential rate increases, so the development of a new contract was in our best favor. All that to say, the existing contract wasn't completely thrown out. It was used as the starting pointer, as a template for this new contract. Some parts have been added, some parts have been removed. Every section has been thoroughly reviewed and discussed by wholesalers, technical experts, and legal representation, so every single word has been looked at. Okay, so now an update for you. What's happened since October? After our meeting in October, we really turned up the dial on our final months of negotiation. We had previously secured strong technical experts to help us in our contract review and strategizing. I don't know if you read through the draft contract in the packet. Some of it's a little confusing, and technical experts were really important to get this right. So Jeff Fox, our former Public Works Director, is now with consort engineering. He's got a very strong background in water engineering. He knows the contract in and out, the context, all of the background was really helpful, at least for me, to bring me up to speed and to help Nick Westendorf and I do a lot of strategizing behind the scenes, really think about what's in the best interest for Tuolotin from a water standpoint. Josh Soper from Barry Elsner &amp; Hammond, he's provided our legal review and guidance throughout this negotiation, but particularly so in the last months of the negotiation work. Josh has familiarity with water contracts, as he previously worked for the city of Sherwood as their city attorney, I believe, and he was really key in negotiating their water contract when they transitioned to the Willamette River. And last but not least is a guy named Harold Smith from Raftellis. Harold specializes in rate models and financial analysis. He has been our set of very technical eyes on all of the rate model components. And just to make sure that everything that we think is happening in the rate model is happening in the rate model, the wholesalers collectively hired FCS Group, which is another financial company, to develop the rate model, so we just wanted him to be kind of our second fact-check on all of the work that had been done. So over the last months of negotiation, we really focused on the remaining issues that we felt existed within the contract and crafting proposed solutions to those issues. We didn't just want to complain, we wanted to be solution-oriented. And we really needed to prioritize what was the most important and realistic things for us to achieve. So some key issues that we've discussed in the past months include, first is arbitration language. Kind of boring, yes, but also very important when you need it. And without getting too much in the weeds, we sought to revise the arbitration language to ensure Tuolotin had fairness and representation if or when arbitration becomes necessary for conflict resolution. We were able to successfully add language ensuring binding arbitration and some other favorable terms that would allow us to provide added context or things like that for an arbitrator to make decisions. We conducted a really thorough review of all of the language within the contract, focusing on intent and clarification of that intent. As we know with contracts, every word matters and can be interpreted differently, and we were finding some of that in our experience. So we discussed a number of statements that were potentially interpreted different by us, as opposed to the folks at Portland. And we did a lot of just discussion of those terms and came to mutual understanding and some compromise that resulted in language cleanup to ensure clear understanding by those folks that are interpreting this in the future, long after myself and the rest of us are all gone. As I'll discuss in more detail later, a key goal for the city, I think I brought up in the October 9th meeting, is what I call balancing of power. We wanted to ensure that Tuolotin had a voice within the contract. So one of the ways that we achieved this was through some revised language about the role of the Working Water Managers Group, the WWMG, which is a group that exists and is spelled out within the contract, that meets and discusses the operation of the contract as long as it is in place. So there's a representative from every wholesale customer and representatives from Portland that come together monthly to meet and discuss all sorts of different things that relate to the contract and the operation of that. And another way we work to achieve some balance within the contract is in negotiation around sole discretion. So language existed that gave Portland sole discretion on a number of decisions. Where possible, we worked to tamp down that language and add clauses that allow for discussion, and if possible, agreement from wholesale customers like us before decisions are made that impact us. Along with strategizing, excuse me, on the content and context of the contract, Josh was able to complete an in-depth legal review on all of those legalese terms, the shalls, the wherethes, all of those things that only a lawyer understands, so he was given time to do that. Negotiating and collaborating directly with Portland's legal representation, Josh was able to completely vet the contract, making some additions, some subtractions, to best encompass our legal needs. Examples include work on things like confidentiality language and the arbitration language, as I discussed. And lastly, in this phase of our negotiation work, we had a lot of just in-person meetings. We got to go down to the city of Portland, meet face-to-face, discuss at a roundtable, and I think that really accomplished a lot. It speaks to the strong working relationships that we've built with Portland through these years of negotiation, and that's something that I, I feel really good about. So I showed this slide in October, but I wanted to touch on it briefly tonight before I get into kind of the next piece of the presentation. When negotiations kicked off in 2020, the group collectively developed a set of guiding principles that we'd all agreed we would work to stay true to. So when negotiations happen in a group setting like this, some ground rules need to be laid and also need to be stuck with. And now that we are at the end of this proverbial road, I, I feel like if I look at this list, I can say that each of these guiding principles has been accomplished in at least some capacity. So I don't feel like anything was severely neglected or left off of, of this list, so. I'll next focus on a couple of key outcomes that I feel we have specifically achieved here in Tuolotin, as we present a final draft of the contract for your approval. So first is high-quality, reliable, and long-term water supply. I think this is just A1. Water is one of the most valuable services that we provide as a city, and so having a stable and long-term agreement that we can rely on is of utmost importance. Additionally, we hurt our decision-makers some years back when they determined that water from the Bull Run reservoir, purchased through water, was the source that they wanted for the city of Tuolotin due to its high quality, among other factors. And we've now ensured with this contract that the water will continue to be delivered for 30 years, so that feels really good. Additionally, important is that there's provisions in the contract to ensure that Portland will meet our water needs as the community grows and hypothetically, our demand will increase. And the long-term contact, contract gives us certainty for planning of the water distribution system here in Tuolotin. Things like the Water Master Plan and capital improvement plans can be fully crafted when we're informed on where our source comes from, because that, that does have a pretty big underlying foundation in what we do with the water once it gets here. Next is stable and predictable rates. So as water costs increase, justified and stable rates are more important for long-term financial planning than ever before. Our collective group of utility providers determined from the start that stable, predictable, and fair rates were the goal for the new contract. Using an industry standard model developed by the American Waterworks Association, the group established a rate model that smoothed out and lowered some looming rate spikes that I mentioned earlier and ensured that we paid for our fair share of costs. This means that we'll pay for our proportional share of capital, operational, and debt service costs associated with Portland's treatment and delivery of our water. Rates paid to Portland will be forecasted in shared years in advance, allowing Tuolotin to plan accordingly in financial planning, rate-making, and budgeting, so this means that Dawn can sleep a lot easier at night, knowing that the rates are set. Notable contract components that further highlight our accomplishment of this one includes the elimination of the guaranteed minimum purchase quantity. So as I mentioned back in October, currently, the contract is, is developed in a way that we have to buy a set amount of water each year. The new contract is eliminating the GMPQ, so we're only going to pay for the water that we use that directly comes to Tuolotin with five-year averages that are informing our rates, not estimates. The straightforward approach is simplified, stable, and predictable. Additionally, the group decided to eliminate some provisions in the contract that could have been used as gaming or kind of cheating the model essentially. So one such was interruptible water, which is like you can buy an insurance policy of extra water during the summertime, and that allows you to kind of cheat the system essentially, and it offloads the burden onto somebody else. So we decided for fairness and for simplistic purposes, stability, et cetera, et cetera, that that would be eliminated. Okay. Hopefully, I haven't lost you guys yet. So next two contract outcomes. First is a balanced partnership in regional water provision. So this is a contract in which Tuolotin is purchasing water from Portland, so we are the purchaser. So and as all contracts go, Tuolotin's not the ultimate authority when we are purchasing something from someone else, and we don't have a complete say in every decision Portland will make in the operation of their system. But we have worked hard to establish the contract as a balanced partnership, and we've successfully written a seat at the table into the agreement, giving Tuolotin a guaranteed voice. We've developed strong working relationships with Portland, as I've mentioned, and we foresee this relationship continuing into the future as we nurture it and continue to get to know one another and problem solve together. But this is a long-term contract, and it must withstand time and changes in staff, political shifts, and potential conflict. So we've accomplished our goal to balance power, as I referred to it earlier, most significantly over the last months of negotiation. The provisions I discussed earlier surrounding a more resolute and explicit process for conflict resolution were a key win for us. Additionally, we gained a larger, more impactful role for the Working Water Managers Group, which I feel really proud about. We've successfully added language that gives the Working Water Managers Group some checks and balances on the decision-making authority of the Portland Water Bureau Administrator, so that can ensure accountability and ideally fairness in their decision-making, knowing that we have a voice to, to stand up and speak out if something happens that we feel was made egregiously in error and brings in another, another party to help with that. So switching gears a bit to the aspect of regional water provision, this contract is really unique in nature because it was developed by multiple water providers that span the Portland metro region. And a big cornerstone of that new water agreement with Portland is the commitment to partnership for the provision of high-quality water and regional resiliency. A couple of provisions within the contract highlight this commitment, so we can diversify our source up to 90% without penalty, so that means I can buy half my water from Person A and half my water from Person B if I want to. So if someone wanted to offset and buy half their water from the Willamette, say, and half from Portland, they could do that with no financial penalty. The contract offers language surrounding a coordinated approach to water emergency, where a unified approach is really beneficial. We've learned this in the past with a couple of emergency situations in the past five years. Things like curtailment are specifically called out to provide guidance for us. And resale of water is allowed under the current contract, and we're happy to see it stay as a provision in the new contract. We've sold water to neighboring entities in the past. It's just a nice allowance to have for potential future needs. The last kind of culminating theme to share is the idea of fairness. So while we are looking to get the best deal for Tuolotin in this contract, fairness was always present in our, in our conversation. So we asked for things that were fair, reasoned and logical, and in exchange, expected that Portland would do the same. A fair trade-off came with the negotiation of the surplus capacity. So without getting too in the weeds, I think I discussed this in October. This solution came as the exit of three large wholesalers would leave significant unallocated costs, which we call the surplus capacity. Tuolotin and other wholesalers were slated to take on a portion of these costs, which would have caused pretty drastic rate increases. So wholesalers banded together. We said, we can accept the shift in costs, and Portland acknowledged the impractical burden it would place on our rates, so a compromise was reached. And Portland is taking on all of those unallocated surplus costs from the start, and over the course of 20 years, a small portion of costs will be allocated back to wholesale customers each year, dependent on demand and increases in, in volume and things like that. So we feel that this is a fair and reasonable solution that was reached, meeting the interests of all parties, so. Last, I think one of the biggest wins that we achieved with the contract is in the inclusion of the Washington County Supply Line. I know this is something that the mayor had mentioned. The Washington County Supply Line is one of the large transmission line that feeds our water all the way from Powell Butte Reservoir to the intersection of Beaverton Hillsdale Highway and Olson Road, if, if you're familiar with that area. It's a 48 to 66-inch ranging in size pipe, so it's pretty big. It's a very large asset that serves us our water. It had previously been excluded from the contract and governed through a separate agreement, which meant that costs were separate from our rates paid to Portland, and they could be very unstable, depending on maintenance and repair costs that were incurred on an annual basis. So with the contract, the supply line will be rolled into contract costs, paid for annually through our rates, and this is a significant ease of financial burden that we felt was highly reasonable, logical, and fair. So I'm considering that a, a pretty big win for us here. Okay. So as I talked through all of these different cost components of a new water contract, one question you all may be thinking is, so how does this impact us from a rate perspective? I think that the graph on the slide is a good way to illustrate some of the different alternatives that we discussed over the course of our negotiations with Portland. So as a baseline, I don't think this thing has a little laser pointer, but I'll point. So.
It does?
Oh. Oh, there we go. Okay, I was just a little like crazy with it. Okay, so this graph shows the cost of a unit of water and what it's projected to be as time goes on. So as you see on what, our Y-axis, I haven't been in graph class for a little while, but the Y-axis shows the cost of one unit of water, so a CCF, so 748 gallons. And then here is the years as they go on. So the green line at the top is Portland retail rates. So I think this is a good illustrator to show that wholesale rates will remain lower than those paid for by Portland's own water customers. So we are a wholesaler, so we are indeed getting wholesale pricing. The dark line, this one, I don't know if it's dark green or dark blue, and the blue line shows some different adjustments to the rate methodology that were considered by the group. It's not super important what they are, but just know that we talked about a couple of different methodologies, a few different alternatives were thrown out there. And ultimately, this yellow line is where we ended up from a rate perspective. So the smoothest increase for us, and ultimately results in the lowest price, is something that I feel good about. So maybe over the course of these couple of years, we might be paying a little more than we would, but then you see large spikes happen. So from a rate-making perspective, the smoothest increase and lowest costs over the course of time felt like the most reasonable place for us to be. So I, I feel like from a rate perspective, this is a good kind of illustrator of some of the different things and alternatives that we looked at. So I just wanted to share that. The lights can go back on now? So I don't put them completely to sleep. So all this to say, yes, our rates are increasing. Our contract with Portland is an element of those cost increases. As you remember, we brought you an update to the Tuolotin Water Master Plan back in July of 2023. Seems like a long time ago, but really not that far away. The Water Master Plan included a number of elements and recommended work for the city's water system. So this includes projects to meet increasing water demands, projects to replace our aging infrastructure, projects to increase our system's resiliency. But the Water Master Plan also took the proposed Portland wholesale contract into consideration. So Portland's costs are also increasing, at least in the near future, because they're taking on some large capital projects on their system. So a new water treatment, which has been mandated by the EPA, will be constructed in the next several years. And a new corrosion-controlled treatment plant to adjust pH levels of water, making it less susceptible to lead contamination, came online last year. A portion of those projects directly serve Tuolotin, so a portion of those project costs will be factored into the city's rates using the agreed-upon financial rate model that has been developed within the proposed contract. So in summary, the proposed water rate increases that the city is, is expecting to see over the last, or excuse me, over the next six or so years that was discussed as part of the Water Master Planning Process have been included, have included the proposed wholesale water contract. So execution of the contract is not expected to cause any change to proposed rates. We had this contract in mind back in early 2023, when we were, when we were looking at the Water Master Plan and did the rate study with that, so. Okay, we've reached the end. Next steps. So Portland Water Bureau Director Gabe Sommer took the proposed final draft of the contract to Portland Commissioner Mingus Maps, who oversees Portland Water Bureau, and Mayor Ted Wheeler. to Portland Commissioner Mingus Maps, who oversees Portland Water Bureau, and Mayor Ted Wheeler um, in late January or early February, I can't remember which. Um, but they did obtain authorization from the mayor to execute. So now wholesale customers like us are approaching our respective boards, like you, for uh, authorization. Um, it's important to note that uh, authorization of proposed contract assigned this is preemptive as the newly proposed contract will not take uh, effect until twenty twenty-six, when the current contract expires. I think I've said that enough times. Um, and this is in our best interest from a financial perspective. In the meantime, what are we going to do between now and twenty twenty-six? Um, we have some work to do internally to analyze our system operations. So we want to look at how we operate our ASR well and kind of make sure it all jives with the new contract. Um, and additionally, we need to do a little bit of cleanup work on some ancillary agreements uh, that relate to the contract. This includes like agreement around the Washington County Supply Line, so we need to do some cleanup there and another secondary joint line um, that Tuolotin shares with Tuolotin Valley Water District. So you may see us back in, you know, the next couple of years to talk about some of this, this cleanup. But um, we're really looking forward to this. We're really proud of the work that we've done. I feel like we've represented Tuolotin really well. Nick's um, in Zoom land, but Nick has done a ton of work. It's been a really good process for us. So um, I know that I am not the only person that's done tons and tons of work on this, so um, I'm just the messenger here. Uh, but happy to take any questions or feedback that you guys have.
Ms. Reyes.
Thank you, Rachel. Um, it was interesting to listen about the water and how we get water to the city. Just some clarification points for those who are out there listening to us, to the millions of Tuolotins that are listening to us. Um, uh, and, and the reason why I'm asking is because I do get these questions. So why is it important to have a long-term contract with um, water services? Um, like twenty, thirty years? And I know you said it's because we're, it has to be, but I just thought I would ask that question and get it on the record.
Having a long-term source is really important because developing a new source is very time-intensive, very legally challenging. It takes a whole lot of policy decisions with things like water rights, or if we want to drill wells, or if we want to tap into a new source in the Willamette. That takes many, many years. So having a thirty-year agreement is really important for the stability of our system. It gives us certainty. It allows us to plan financially. It allows us to plan what we need to do here in Tuolotin in terms of our infrastructure. It affects our water quality and all of the things that we know about how, what the water has, can, you know, from a chemical perspective or a chemistry perspective, things I don't know everything about. But um, that's why I would say it's very important that you can't just switch a water source willy-nilly. And so having a long-term source is important. It's also important that we have security that we know, because our council spoke and said that Portland Water is ultimately what they wanted. And, and that resonates with the community. I think there's a lot of sentiment behind that. And so if we know that long-term, that way we can work to strengthen our partnerships with Portland. We can work to advocate for things from Portland that we need. Um, we can work to develop the resiliency of our supply line, all of those things.
And the other question I have, because you mentioned Washington County, um, this is a city uh, resource, which means those who are in the city, in the side of Clackamas County are also receiving the same services that the ones are in the Washington County. The residents are in the, of Tuolotin that are in the Clackamas County side.
Yep. Any customer that is, that receives water from the city of Tuolotin receives water from Bull Run Reservoir.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council Brooks.
Thanks for all your work on this. Um, I don't know about other counselors, but I've learned a lot about water, I know the mayor, um, since I've been on council. And also heard a lot about the um, sentiments from the community. So I first wanted to thank the community. Not everyone in our community understands or is really um, up on our water, but there are people in our community that are super highly educated and really, really bright and help um, and are strong advocates. And I um, and they help me do a better job. So I just want to thank the community for being outspoken with what they want. Um, and then I wanted to ask a question. I had one confusion on the outcomes question around diversity of water supplies. Can you go into, why would we use Willamette?
So it's probably, I might not be a good example, but one of the things that's important to note is if we were to have a need to diversify our source, or if any wholesaler has a need to diversify their source, being able to draw water from two different sources is, I, I think, really a valuable option to have. Um, let's say the person that provides you your water ends up not having enough water, and you may need to draw from another source. That's really important. And moving water across the region is something that a lot of different water providers have talked about. We've talked about it at the consortium. So being able to diversify your source, um, I think it's really helpful from a flexibility perspective. I don't know if Tuolotin is ever going to need or want to take advantage of that. But if we do, say we want to drill another well somewhere, we would have the opportunity to do that and we wouldn't have to pay any financial penalties to Portland to do so.
Okay, thank you. I just think, I know that some people might be concerned about that piece. And I think it's really important to be really clear about what we're talking about.
It's a, it's a nice piece of flexibility, because this does affect multiple wholesalers that have all sorts of different arrangements going on. So I think allowing for that flexibility is, is beneficial for everybody.
Good. Um, I, and then I, I just invite community members too, if they have issues or questions around that and want further explanation, to reach out to your department, to Rachel Sykes. Um, and I wanted to thank, uh, when I first came on, I got the, the tour of the water system, the line from Terrence and is um, so, you're so enthusiastic about um, our water system. I read stories, I just read one last week, of a whole community in California that doesn't have access to drinking water. There's, there's communities that are being built with no water in place. So in my mind, the thirty-year plan is a great get for us. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to thank also, um, Jeff Fox too, because he helped teach me a lot of stuff and stayed engaged with our process and helped me to understand the collaboration from the consortium and how that's helped our relationships so much. Um, at one point, it looked like the Willamette system might be a pretty good deal. And it's worked out that there's a lot of extra costs and things that is really um, good that we heard from our community and really great that um, that we had continued support with such great expertise, from such great expertise. And then finally, I wanted to say um, that, and thank you for your work too. Um, finally, I wanted to say that uh, I'm doing a lot tonight. Um, that um, oh, us, I had one question on this one. So now we're the biggest wholesale customer, so.
That's correct.
I think that's great.
Yeah.
Um, and it's given us um, more oomph at the table, which has been great. And I appreciate you taking advantage of that. And um, I am curious about, I know that when there's rights to water too, that there's, it's a, it's a lot of times set up as a historical. Um, so I'm just wondering if that's true also for these contracting? No?
I don't think so. Um, I don't think Portland would take on wholesalers that they know they couldn't serve, or they would in a very limited capacity. Um, from what we know now, Portland has an abundance of water. I don't foresee us being cut off or anything like that. There was a conversation um, several years ago that Nick can probably speak to better than I or Terrence. Um, just a conversation about the pipeline that serves Tuolotin. Um, now that multiple wholesalers are leaving, capacity on the pipeline is not an issue. Um, there's plenty of room, so Portland has water to sell us. They've guaranteed that we will, within the contract terms, that we'll, they'll be able to serve us up to our, you know, peak day. Um, and I don't foresee that being an issue. If anything, Portland is actively looking to gain more wholesalers because they've lost wholesalers. So um, the volume of water is not an issue, so.
Great. Um, anyway, I thank you very much for the work and also to Nick and um, everybody. I'm really excited that we're getting it done and it, and we're ahead of schedule. And it's a long conversation and a long relationship, and it's great that the relationships have improved and that we're um, in a much better position. Thanks for all your work.
Other questions or comments? Ms. President Pratt.
Um, Willis Sherrilyn once said, the most important thing we provide fr- from the city to our residents is water. I mean, we cannot live without water, so I just want to um, thank you. I know a lot of people put a lot of hard work into this and it's been years. And not only making sure we have water coming in, but that the people ten and twenty years from now will have some power to have a say for Tuolotin. That's really huge. I do have one question though, on the um, financial impacts. When you get to twenty twenty-six, so are, we're still under the same contract till twenty twenty-six, correct?
July first.
Okay, so that increase from now to twenty-six, which almost doubles, is in the current contract. Okay, I mean, it's nice that it's flattened out going out.
Yeah, so we're seeing rate impacts right now from like, things like the Corrosion Controlled Treatment Plant, which have came online. So that's kind of in this first half of the contract, um, in the first half of kind of our spike that we've pro- proposed or presented as part of the Water Master Plan. And then the second half is really when that treatment plant comes online. Um, there's a provision in the new contract that is construction works in progress, so QIP. Um, basically that allows for some of the costs of, of capital projects to be incurred as they're being built, as opposed to that kind of huge bump right when they're built. So that's kind of why the smoothing happens in twenty twenty-six, that, that filtration plant. Well, it will not be online in twenty twenty-six.
Right.
But we'll start kind of paying for it and smoothing those rates to avoid the big spikes that happen.
The big hit. You, you've just done awesome work. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments?
I do have a comment on this side.
Okay.
Sherrilyn, you must be really proud because she's done a fantastic job in summarizing this whole plan. Even me, you, the council, coming alongside you and listening to you present and talk about this in a very understandable, coherent way, it's just been very impressive. So I just want to thank you for all the energy that you've put into this and explained to us. Amazing. Hope people out in, out in the land can, can see how amazing the job you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, as a, a layperson myself, um, you know, I don't make rates. I don't, I'm not an engineer, so I, I had to learn it as well coming on board. And that's why I am really grateful for all of the assistance from some, like Jeff or all of the other wholesalers have been super helpful in bringing me up to speed, because I joined the city in twenty twenty-one when this was in progress. So I had to learn it, so I feel like I'm in a better position to present it to, to you all um, because I had to go through the same process, so.
Other questions, comments?
During the ad says, thank you again. Um, what I like about this is the emphasis on fairness and collaboration. When I first came on City Council a gazillion years ago, that relationship wasn't there between us and Portland Water Bureau, nowhere near this. Um, so this is a tremendous shift, uh, that, you know, both sides win here. Um, and I thank you for all your efforts in Terrence and Nick on this and Jeff, um, because it's breath of fresh air compared to when I first started on, on council, like I said, and water was, the discussions we had and, big difference. So thank you. All right. So do, you don't need first or second reading, this is just a roll call if someone that.
I'll make a motion to. Adopt, which one is it? Two?
One.
One. Adopt can, um, resolution number five seven six zero dash twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to execute a water sales agreement with the city of Portland.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number fifty-seven sixty dash twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to execute a water sales agreement with the city of Portland. Any discussion on the motions? Right, so it starts with, Council Gonzalez.
Yes.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Pratt.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also, it's unanimous. Got to use it once. All right, thanks for.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, item number two on their general business, consideration of resolution number fifty-seven sixty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County and the cities of Tigard and Sherwood related to funding for a homeless services system, city liaison and homeless services capital projects.
Yeah, say that three times fast. Um, hello again, Mayor and Council. I'm Megan George, the Deputy City Manager in Tuolotin. Uh, I presented in January on the topic of Tuolotin's camping regulations. And at the time, I mentioned that we were in discussions with Washington County, Tigard and Sherwood for this IGA. And I am happy to say that we concluded our discussions. And I am here before you with resolution fifty-seven sixty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to sign that resolution. So the concept came about um, between Washington County and area cities that were looking to address capacity issues and provide more coordination and action on homelessness uh, between the county and the cities. As you all know, Metro voters passed the supportive housing services measure in May twenty twenty, and Washington County received the share of funding for unincorporated Washington County, as well as the incorporated cities like Tuolotin. Washington County is responsible for implementation of that measure, and they serve as the continuum of care lead agency. But as you also know, excuse me, got a tickle in my throat. Uh, and we heard an update from Catherine Galean from Washington County earlier this year. Um, with this, cities still have a role to play in dealing with the impacts of homelessness and houselessness um, through the bridge of provision of services like our library, our Parks and Recreation Department, uh, law enforcement and neighborhood concerns. This intergovernmental agreement would provide funding for a shared position between Tigard, Tuolotin and Sherwood. It would also serve as a conduit for additional funding for capital projects, if any arise. There are not currently any capital projects on the list. The position will be housed with the city of Tigard. Tigard would be the employer for the position. And Tuolotin will be getting approximately twenty-five percent of this employee's time. Generally, the responsibilities include things like supporting coordination of services, providing clear info for the public and for council, helping to identify local issues that can be resolved at the regional level, um, and other sorts of things like that. Washington County will provide two hundred thousand dollars from the supportive housing services measure for the first three years of the contract, and after that point, we will renegotiate. Um, if resolution fifty-seven sixty-three dash twenty-four is passed tonight, uh, the city manager will sign on behalf of Tuolotin. Tigard City Council is meeting tomorrow to review the same IGA, and Sherwood is meeting in the next couple of weeks to do the same. Uh, staff are scheduled to discuss next steps in early April, assuming that all three councils decide to move forward. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Questions for Megan? Council Brooks.
Thank you for the update and information. Um, I just, I want to say one thing, because I know sometimes um, there's difficulty getting um, resources here from big funding measures like the housing bond. And um, when that housing bond went through, um, Jennifer Proctor, who used to do the um, PAB, suggested that I jump on that as um, geographical diversity. And so I just wanted to point out that um, that there was an intention there and that we um, are getting services here that I hope will be helpful to be more in front of some of these issues than some other um, cities and things have to deal with, with us, um, with homelessness. And I think that everybody um, in the community, that nobody wants to see people on the street for, you know, it's just a horrible thing. So um, I did have a question about how our city um, interacts with this service provider, like the police department, the library, like how does that work, the collaboration?
Sure, yeah. So the position will be based out of the city of Tigard, and fifty percent of their time is dedicated to Tigard and then twenty-five percent remaining for Tuolotin and Sherwood. Um, with that, I think there's going to be a lot of overlapping work. Part of, one of the main requirements of the position is that they'll facilitate coordination between the county and the cities, and that's obviously going to be the same for each of us. Um, the position will be supervised by me while they're in Tuolotin, uh, reporting back to the Tigard point of contact with feedback and ex- uh, other things relevant. to that. Our hope is that the position will be able to spend time physically in Tuolotin, at least during the initial period, so that they can form relationships with staff in different departments. We'll certainly be scheduling meetings with our parks maintenance team, folks from our police department, um, specifically our community services officer and others that encounter day-to-day, um, uh, issues related to homelessness. So I think that's most likely how it'll work, yeah.
So you think a lot of the navigation will be like, um, not in-person with the?
The position will be primarily remote, um, per city of Tigard's personnel roles.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Council President Pratt.
So was the allocation just basically by population size?
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah, it's fairly close.
Yeah, the county's expectation is that they'll be spending a good amount of their time regardless of jurisdiction, coordinating with the county on issues, and then the remainder would be split in that.
I'll give a big yay for something for East Washington County. But, um, so will there be, will you just be reporting to this person, or will there be interactions between you and the person like you in the other two cities, like a committee?
Sure, yeah. The intention is for this person to also work with similar positions out of Beaverton and Hillsborough. Um, the three positions together have responsibilities to create an annual reporting mechanism for the cities as well as the county, and to come up with shared data that, um, cities would be interested in. So I anticipate that they'll have a regular meeting schedule set up for the three of them, and then the three of them will also plug into existing meeting structures through Washington County.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay.
Okay, so if a person's, um, struggling with houselessness and they need the services such as this, how do they go about, um, or how do we go about helping them with that?
Sure, so it will, uh, this position is not going to be a case manager position or an outreach position. Those services are still primarily being offered via contracts that Washington County has with, uh, community-based organizations. This position could interact with those types of things on a more systemic level, so if we tend to see the same types of issues cropping up, let's say, for example, related to storage of stuff in Tuolotin, they would then be able to facilitate connecting with the county to say, "Hey, we're still seeing these issues. There's not a location in Tuolotin for this. The closest one is in Tigard, and they're at capacity. Is there something that we could look at incorporating within Tuolotin's boundaries", for example. So they wouldn't necessarily be interacting directly with people experiencing homelessness in Tuolotin, but they would be identifying trends and experiences based on those interactions, either with, uh, outreach workers or with what our staff are seeing, um, on the ground level, and then facilitating solutions or problem-solving.
Okay, thank you.
Got a motion?
I'd like to motion that we adopt resolution number fifty-seven sixty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County and the cities of Tigard and Sherwood related to funding for a homeless services system city liaison and homeless services capital projects, if they happen.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution fifty-seven sixty-three dash twenty-four. Any discussions on those motions? All right, this is again another roll call vote, so I'll go, I'll start at my right. Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council President Pratt.
Aye.
The chair votes aye also. It's unanimous. All right.
All right, thank you. We'll get going.
All right, thank you. Uh, okay, item number three, consideration of recommendations from the council committee on advisory appointments. Who's leading this? Maria's leading this week?
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna thank all the, uh, candidates, uh, that came through the interview process, um, on March fourth. Uh, as always, we always get great, uh, great people in our city that, uh, are willing to serve and, um, care for our community through these advisory committees. Uh, they're very valuable to us, uh, city councilors, because they really get to be our, our, our eyes and ears, their voice, the voice of the community to us, as sometimes we cannot, um, take, you know, we can't as human possibly take care of everybody, twenty-eight thousand people in our city. So I thank everyone that came through our interview process, and, um, it's always, uh, I always feel very proud of our community when I, I meet people that wanna serve and wanna continue to serve in our, um, committees. We had, um, we interviewed people from the Tuolotin Arts Advisory Committee, Tuolotin Parks Committee, and Core Area Parking District Committee.
For the Arts Advisory Committee, we had, uh, we recommend three reappointments, and I have to say, they're all very excited about the Veterans Plaza. They all mentioned that. And the, the three people are Mason Hall, Janet Carr, and Brett Hamilton.
And in addition, we have Cosima Slider for the Tuolotin Parks Advisory Committee, um, and Cosima is a student member. And we have Amy Trevor from Core Area Parking District Board, and then Heather Weber, also Core Area Parking. So I will, do I make a motion?
Yeah.
Um, I move to, um, there's no, I, I guess I make a motion to confirm the recommendations for the council committee of advisory appointments.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to confirm the recommendations from the council committee on advisory appointments. Any discussions on those motions? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays? It's unanimous. Uh, we had no items removed from consent tonight. Uh, any council communications? Council Brooks.
I, first I wanted to say, um, that March, this is our first meeting in March, but March is, um, uh, acknowledging Women's Month, and I just wanted to thank all of the women that serve on our city council and the men that are so supportive of us, um, here on the council and at home. Um, and it takes a lot of courage, and it's a different voice than, uh, traditional voice, so, um, and we also have a great city manager that's a leader for women, city managers as well in our region, so I just wanna acknowledge that and, um, and, and acknowledge all of the, the women out there, cuz it is a different experience, and, um, and anyway, we see you. And then the other thing I wanted to, um, say is that, especially because the parks or the, um, arts committee, I just wanted to congratulate the, um, Veterans Committee on their nomination for, uh, Volunteer of the Year Award, and, um, the, there's been a lot of hours and work put on it, and, um, it's taken up a lot of space in the committee this year, and, um, and there's been extra, extra meetings, extra time, extra attention, and extra enthusiasm. It's something that I feel is gonna be a kickoff for our parks bond, as well as for the identity like we talked about before with Cora. Um, and, uh, I'm really excited about it, and I'm really appreciative of all the people that reapplied to be on the committee, um, especially with, you know, it was a big year. Thanks.
Any other announcements?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, a second, to adjourn tonight's meeting. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for attending, and have a very good evening.